All right, well, good morning.
Good morning.
I want to welcome everybody to the Tuesday, October thirty first, twenty twenty-three meeting of the Denton County Commissioners' Court. We're excited to have y'all in attendance this morning, and those of y'all who are watching online. At this time, I would like to welcome Ms. Marta Men to lead us in our invocation, and then our pledges will be led by Clint Shepard, our Assistant Fire Marshal, and we're excited to have you, Marta. You're always a blessing.
Good morning. It is a good morning. It's a very good morning because this is the day that the Lord has made, and it is Reformation Sun- Reformation Day, and it's All Saints' Day. So as we will celebrate that today, and not what Halloween is, then we will be honored by God because he says, "I am giving the anointing to the saints today." So my prayer is Psalm one twenty-one. "I look up to the mountains and the hills longing for God's help, but then I realize that our true help and protection come only from the Lord, our Creator who made the heavens and the earth. He will guard and guide us, never letting us stumble or fall. God is our keeper. He will never forget nor ignore us. He will never slumber nor sleep. He is the guardian God of his people, Israel. Jehovah himself will watch over us. He'll always be at our side to shelter us safely in his presence. He's protecting us from all danger, both day and night. He will keep us from every form of evil or calamity as he continually watches over us. We will be guarded by God himself. We will be safe when we leave our home and safe when we return, and he will protect us now and he will protect us forevermore. Hear the word of the Lord. His protection is over his people, and we are his people. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit."
Thank you, ma'am.
Join me for the pledge of allegiance, please. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now for the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Well, thank you, Marta. Thank you, Clint. All right. I'd like to go to item three B, which is approval of a proclamation recognizing Jackson Vick in any appropriate action. And Jackson, if you'll please come forward here to our-
Your parents can come with you. Go ahead and bring all the goodies, please.
Well, good morning. We're glad to have you here this morning, and it's always fun for us to have an opportunity to highlight and talk about the youth here in the county and their special accomplishments, and have the families here as well, because we know that kids' accomplishments are family accomplishments. So we're excited to have you all here. So I'm going to read this proclamation, and we'll have you say anything about your special accomplishment that you so- that you see fit. This is a court proclamation recognizing Jackson Vick. Whereas Jackson Vick, a twelve-year-old who lives with his parents Jeff and Carrie and Sister Jalen and twin sister Juliana, they live in Highland Village, and whereas Jackson is a seventh grader attending online school through Connections Academy where his favorite subject is science. Whereas Jackson began riding dirt bikes at the age of four and was racing in motocross by the time he was five years old. Whereas Jackson won the sixty-five cc super motocross world all-star championship, that's a mouthful, where he raced on the same track the professionals raced during their national TV live broadcast. And whereas Jackson is the national champion for the sixty-five cc ten and eleven limited class and holds the second-place position in the sixty-five cc ten through eleven class. Whereas Jackson was one of nine kids to represent Team USA in the FIM Junior World Championship, which was held in Romania, where he finished sixteenth overall against more than sixty competitors from over thirty-five nations. And now therefore, be it resolved, the Denton County Commissioners' Court does hereby congratulate Jackson Vick on his remarkable accomplishments and wish- and wishes him much success in his future competitions and championships. Done in open court, this is the thirty-first day of October twenty twenty-three, upon a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Williams. Well, tell me, what is your favorite thing about racing?
Um, I like hitting big jumps.
Big jumps. Okay, all right, all right. Well, that's great. Well, we are- we're very proud of you, and thank you for representing your sport and the county as you go across America and across the world, it sounds like. So we're very proud, and Mom and Dad, thank y'all for supporting his endeavors, and I know he's going to grow up to be a fine young man. It takes character and discipline and tenacity to do those kind- and skill and ability to do that. So those accomplishments. So, members, do you have any other comments?
Judge, if you don't mind, you know, it's- I know how difficult a sport it is. I did it from ten to thirteen, broke leg in half, broke my arm, broke my collarbone, and I think that's when my dad said, "That's enough." I was nothing like you, by the way, and it was totally different. But so I understand, I understand the discipline it takes, and what most people don't understand is it's actually the most demanding sport on your body physically. Not only do you have to be in such a great condition, but it's not if, it's just when you're going to have some type of pretty massive injury of some sort. It's just, it is what it is. It's part of the sport. But the fun thing is, is that you can heal back up at such a young age, jump back on and keep going. And what's really neat about it is, so I watch the pro motocross all the time, and so you raced on TV, which is awesome, and then I saw it and I was watching, and it said, you know, "You in first place?" And it said, "Where you from?" And I was like, "What? That's from us. That's Denton County area." So I got with Ms. Mitchell, because Ms. Mitchell is actually the wonderful commissioner that's over here where you live, and asked if she wouldn't mind having you folks here. And so it's absolute pleasure, and we're really proud of you, and I wish you the best of luck, and I think you're going to do wonderful, and remember who helps you get there, it's your parents. You have to have that great mom and dad at home to help you through such an adventure like this. So, but congratulations. We're so happy to have you here.
Thank you for having me.
Yeah.
Commissioner Mitchell?
I'm so excited, and if I had watched motocross, Ryan, I would have thought that, but I was probably watching some style show or something. And so I miss the motocross.
Romance, romance.
But I just want to thank you and congratulate not only you but your parents for being a wonderfully young man and pursuing your dreams. That's what it's all about, is pursuing what you think is important in your life and having your parents support. A lot of times we have dreams and we let them go by the wayside because we think we can't do it. But you can do anything that you set your mind to within limits and that your parents let you do right now because you're a little young. I'm not so sure that I would have been happy about you racing as a mom, and I'm pretty sure your mom had some reservations about you getting out there racing, because, "Oh, he's going to hurt himself." It was bad enough for me to watch a football, my son played football, so the racing, I don't know if I- I'd probably try to get in the car with you because I did run down the sidelines with the football with my son running a touchdown. So I probably would have gotten in the car with you and rode with you with my eyes closed. Thank you so much. I appreciate you for representing Denton County, Highland Village. Be blessed.
So, Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
Um, if you get in the car with him, first off, he doesn't race cars. That's okay. He races motorcycles. It's a two-wheel. It's a two-wheel? But you could try to get on the back of it, but I don't think that would work out so well.
No, no, no helmet for you. No helmet for you. You're hard-headed enough. We know that. We'll be okay. I'm going to warn you, she will tell you how to drive. So she still tells me how to drive everywhere. We've been doing this all these years, has she? Am I right?
I won't drive, but I'll tell you how.
Yeah. Her husband's her chauffeur.
No bridges, no talking on the phone, two hands on the wheel. I know the whole deal.
He doesn't obey.
I still take her. We have fun.
Thank you so much.
All right. Do you have any- members, any other comments?
Thank you.
All right. Well, Jackson, do you have any other comments this morning?
Um, just thank you for letting me be here.
All right, good. Well, thank you. Great.
Um, Dad, do you have anything you want to say for him?
Um, we just appreciate you guys recognizing Jackson. He works really, really hard. So he, with homeschool, he trains full-time to do what he does, and this was a huge year for him. Our family never thought we'd be going to Europe, nevertheless Romania, with six weeks' notice. So we're super proud of him, how he not only represented his county but his country this year. So we're very proud of our son, and thank you so much for recognizing him.
Absolutely. All right. Well, we're proud of him, and come back and see us. Yes, 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 that's okay. All right. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Well, congratulations, buddy. Don't listen. Don't let him scare you too bad. I'm so proud of you. No, he needs to hold him. This is a proclamation. We'll hold it. This is what's called a challenge coin.
Yeah, we'll take pictures with you both.
This is at the courthouse, and you can take this and that as a souvenir of today. Does that sound good?
Thank you.
All right, here we go.
Congratulations.
All right.
Thank you.
Go ahead and turn around right in front of you. It's behind you. Right here, right next to Judge.
Stand right here. We're going to hold this. All right, Mom and Daddy, you're on the picture. All right.
Y'all in here. Run, you want to-
Oh, come over on that. Whoa, golly, get you some sun.
It's a bright light. I know. It's natural light coming in. Very good. Let's do it again. Dawn's got her camera. Do you need- you're good?
I think you're good.
Thank you so much. Congratulations. And I'd be riding the motorcycle bike with you, not the car. I may have a sidecar to go with me, but I'll be with you. I wouldn't be leaving you alone, that's for sure. I'd be in the stands watching.
Hey, good job, buddy. It's great to see you.
Congratulations. Dawn's going to get a picture of these.
Thanks again.
Thank you so much. We so appreciate it.
Well, hang on. Jackson, can I stand right here behind you, buddy?
I could have a sidecar, but everything you said was exactly right. It scares us so much.
It's fun.
Yeah, appreciate you guys doing that. No, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone here for item thir- three C, the operation green light? Anyone in attendance? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and proceed forward to our other guests on the agenda. I know we have several of our guests here. For fourteen A, this is approval of the twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four Social Services Agreement between Denton County, Texas, and number one, the Children's Advocacy Center of North Texas Incorporated; number two, the Court-appointed Special Advocates of Denton County, which is CASA; item three, which is Denton County Friends of the Family in any appropriate action. And do we have a motion for approval? Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Is there any of our agencies? I know we're going to do some photographs here with the check presentations. Tony or Kristen, do y'all want to say anything this morning? Or any of our guests that are here or not? I know, y'all need to talk about your agencies. How great y'all do. So we let's-
Debbie here. Hi, I'm sorry. I'm Kristen Howell. I'm the CEO of the Children's Advocacy Center for North Texas. Delighted to be here this morning. I've- we- the three of us would never pass up a chance at the microphone to talk to the esteemed crew. We're very grateful for the funds that will serve our kids in this community. The Children's Advocacy Center responds to the criminal level child abuse allegations that are made at the advocacy center. Kids arrive with- in a state of crisis. Law enforcement and CPS meet them there, and the investigation begins, and kids get a safe place, a child-friendly place, to tell their story. And with that, all the folks who are on the team who will help come in and make a difference. Law enforcement that we work with every day throughout this county, they're just extraordinary. They step up for kids. The CPS teams are also extraordinary, and our team is there to provide victim services. We want to make sure that kids get justice and healing, and so on behalf of the kids that walk in every day, we're grateful for these funds that provide those core services that are available for families on a day that they never dreamed would happen. They certainly didn't wish would happen, but when it does, they want to make sure that they're taken care of, and that's our job. So we're pleased to do that and very honored to work with the county. We're very excellent partners with the DA's office and the sheriff's office, so two incredible Denton County offices. We watch them do extraordinary things. So thank you.
All right, thank you. The feelings are mutual. Yes. Good morning.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners, Debbie Jensen, Executive Director for CASA of Denton County. And we are so pleased to be part of Denton County because more than two hundred community volunteers are working on our behalf out in the community with about six hundred children affected by abuse and neglect as their advocates, and we always need more of them. So I just want to remind you to always share that message with others that you may know in the community who could serve as an advocate for a child or children. We always need more of them, and in twenty twenty-four especially, we'll need about fifty more than we used this year. So it's always an ongoing increase that we have, and we're so thankful for all of you and your support.
Thank you. You had a great event the other night. It was great.
My name is Toni Johnson Simpson. I'm the very proud Executive Director of Denton County Friends of the Family. We thank you for your investment, your support as we go about serving citizens of this community. We're very honored that we had the opportunity to help four thousand three hundred and fifty-one people in twenty twenty-two with our staff of about seventy-five and the volunteer force of about three hundred, responding to over three thousand crisis calls, all people who called us on their worst day. When people call my organization, they're calling because something horrible has happened in their life, and typically because it was someone who loved them, who they thought loved them and who they loved, chose to harm them. We thank you for the investment, the support, and the partnership as we go about doing our day-to-day work, and we're very honored to it. And what a great way to close out Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Absolutely. Well, I want to- I would consider all of y'all friends and partners with the county, and not only do y'all do good work, y'all have well-run organizations. And so I want to commend you for your- I know that the court shares these sentiments that when we make this investment, this partnership with y'all, that y'all will use it and spend these dollars wisely. And so I want to- I just want to thank y'all for that because there's a level of confidence that I know I have, and as does the public in y'all's organization. So any other comments?
I just want to thank you all. I had the opportunity on Friday to call out some victims of domestic violence, and it's just amazing. And thank you for all that you do. CASA, Children's Advocacy Center, Friends of the Family. Without you all, Denton County would be like in a lot of services, and a lot of our citizens would be further harmed because they wouldn't have anybody to pick up them out and help them. They wouldn't have anywhere to go to tell their story and get some help. Thank you for all you do.
Okay, any other comments?
I just echo Commissioner Mitchell. Everything you all do is so crucial and so important, and not a fun time at all, but something that needs to be done. We thank you so much for that.
All right, any other- okay, very good. Well, we have a motion and a second, and we voted as well. So we were going to do some- take a just a quick pause and do some presentation check photographs, and then we'll continue. Very good. All right, we'll go back to the- we'll go back to the beginning. We've got our- there's no shareholders or anyone on item one that is registered to speak. There is no one. Okay, let's go to proceed to item two. Are consent agenda members, are there any items you'd like to pull off the consent agenda with a motion for approval as presented? A motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Next is item two A, is approval of the order-making appointments. Item two B, is approval of the intra-departmental transfers. Item two C, is approval of the budget memory request one zero zero one eight zero to reallocate countywide ambulance funding in amount of one million four hundred and forty thousand dollars to various ambulance service agencies and the fire and ambulance service- to various ambulance service agencies in the Fire and Ambulance Services Department and any appropriate action. Item two D is approval of Budget Member Request one zero zero two two zero for the U.S. Department of Justice Drug Court grant to transfer one hundred thousand dollars from psychological services to residential support funding will be used to provide substance abuse treatment services to our veterans. Item three A is approval of a resolution recognizing Randy Patterson's retirement and any appropriate action. And I'll go ahead and read his resolution. This is Resolution Honoring Randy Patterson for over thirteen years of service to Denton County and where as Denton County Commissioners Court Denton County, Texas during a regular session on the thirty-first day of October twenty twenty-three, considered the following resolution. Whereas Randy Patterson Financial Support Specialist Two is retiring on October thirty-first, twenty twenty-three with over thirteen years of outstanding and commendable service to the Denton County Sheriff's Office. Whereas Randy was hired on February third, twenty ten as a detention officer, and during that time, he worked entirely in the POD unit in barracks for work release. After three and a half years of working in detention, he took the position of Financial Support Specialist One on October the ninth, twenty thirteen, which was reclassified on October the first, twenty eighteen to Financial Support Specialist Two. And whereas Randy's supervisor states that he has been a great asset and a valuable member of the Denton County Sheriff's Office for the past thirteen years. She has had the honor to work beside him, and he has been a great assistant, uh, to the comm trailer for the past ten and a half years, and Randy was an, has an exceptional work ethic. He's meticulous with each task assigned. He will be dearly missed, but it's a great honor and recognition that we wish him the best in his retirement. And whereas Randy is a dedicated employee who is well-respected by his peers and supervisor, and whereas Randy plans to enjoy retirement by remodeling their condo in Corpus Christi, Texas to enjoy the ocean view from the balcony, I'm gonna go visit, uh, as well as traveling with his partner thirty-three years and their two dogs. And now therefore be it resolved that Denton County Commissioners Court Denton County, Texas does hereby extend to Randy Patterson our sincere and grateful appreciation for his dedicated service to Denton County. We congratulate Randy on his well-earned retirement and extend our best wishes to him for continued success, happiness, and good health in the years to come. Done in open court this the thirty-first day of October twenty twenty-three upon a motion made by motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item three C. This is approval of a proclamation recognizing November the sixth through November the twelfth as Operation Green Light for veterans. And do we have anyone in attendance? I wanna check one more time, is anyone in attendance? Oh, good, we do have someone, hello. Paul?
I was gonna stick around for the entire thing, so I'm glad you got everything else out in front. But, uh, of course, Veterans Day is next Saturday, uh, November the eleventh. November the tenth, we will be having our Veterans Day Ceremony on the square. Operation Green Light is not a brand-new, uh, progress or process. It's something that came about just before COVID hit, and that's when they were handing out green light bulbs for people to put on their residents. I like what they're doing now statewide. Understand we may be lighting up our courthouses with green light during this period of time. It's a shame we'll have to take down the Texas Rangers red, white, and blue, but nonetheless, I think it's very important that we recognize and bring attention to our veterans and actually thank them for the services they have provided to our country.
Thank you. So this is, um, whereas there is a court proclamation recognizing Operation Green Light for veterans, and whereas residents of Denton County have great respect, admiration, and utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly, selflessly served our country and its community in the armed forces. Whereas the contributions and sacrifices of those who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas Denton County seeks to honor individuals who have made countless sacrifices for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas veterans continue to serve our community in American Legion, the veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, civil service, and by functioning as county veteran service officers in twenty-nine states to help fellow former service members access more than fifty-two billion in federal health, disability, and compensation benefits each year. And whereas approximately two hundred thousand service members transition to civilian communities annually with an estimated twenty percent transitioning to civilian life in the near future. And whereas studies indicate that forty-four to seventy-two percent of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life, putting them at high risk for suicide during their first year after military service. And whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and boroughs to recognize Operation Green Light for veterans. And now therefore be it resolved that Denton County Commissioners Court in appreciation of the sacrifices of the United States military personnel hereby observes Monday, November the sixth through Sunday, November the twelfth as Operation Green Light and asks the Denton County community to honor all those who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying green lights in the window of their business or residence during this time. Done in open court this the thirty-first day of October twenty twenty-three by a motion made by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any, any other discussion? Well, I'm glad we're doing this, and I'm glad the National Association of Counties, which we're members of, is promoting this nationwide, and I'm glad that we're gonna be participating as well. So, any other comments? We have a motion, a second, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, let's go to item five A. This is approval of the bill report payments from CSCD Community Corrections. TAIP Sheriff's Training, Sheriff's Forfeiture, VIT Interest, and DA Forfeiture Funds are presented for recording purposes only. Mr. May.
Thank you, Judge. I have no changes today. Recommend approval as presented.
All right, well, do we have a motion for approval? Motion by Commissioner Falconer. Second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, let's go to, um, item six A. This is approval of exemption from bidding for the sole source purchase of five, of a five-year agreement for automatic door inspections from Allegion Access Technologies LLC in amount of forty-three thousand six hundred sixty dollars per year. Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six B, approval of exemption from bidding for the sole source purchase of Zavanta Software from ComPros Incorporated in amount of fifty-two thousand eight hundred fifty-four dollars and twelve cents and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell. Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six C, approval of purchase of a John Deere six-one-zero-five-E tractor with a Tiger Bengal boom mower from Bain Machinery Incorporated, a distributor of Tiger Corporation and John Deere in amount of one hundred seventy-two thousand one hundred six, one hundred thirty-six dollars and seventy cents through buy board cooperative contract seven zero six dash two-three. Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six D, approval amendment RFP zero-two-one-four-two-two-three-five-E Clinical Works LLC Software License and Support Agreement for Electri- Electronic Medical Records and Practice Management to remove two providers and the annual maintenance of the Dragon Medical Practice Edition License. Motion by Commissioner Falconer. Second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six C, approval of the report on proceeds from the online surplus auction two-three-two-seven-seven-six held in September and October of twenty twenty-three. Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six F, approval renewal of RFP two-zero-two-six-zero-five voluntary benefits to colonial life. Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six G, approval of specifications for engineering design services from, for the trip twenty-two on system projects are RFPQ two-three-dash-two-seven-six-seven, an appointment of evaluation committee to include Tina Massey, Director of Transportation and Engineering, Stephen Bellknap, Director of Development Services, Holly Sedlowski, Chief Administrator, County Judge Caprisa Will- Caprisia Willis, Chief Administrator, Precinct One Isabel Hernandez, Chief Minister, Chief Administrator, Precinct Two April Greenhill, Chief Administrator, Precinct Three, and Stacy Murfree, Chief Administrator, Precinct Four, and Berry Heard, ITS, non-voting. Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six H, approval of specifications for engineering design services, RFPQ two-three-two-seven-six-eight, an appointment of evaluation committee to include Tina Massey, Director of Transportation and Engineering, Stephen Bellknap, Director of Development Services, Holly Sedlowski, Chief Ma- Chief Administrator for the County Judge, Caprisia Willis, Chief Administrator, Precinct One, Isabel Hernandez, Chief Administrator, Precinct Two, April Greenhill, Chief Administrator, Precinct Three, and Stacy Murfree, Chief Administrator, Precinct Four, and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven A, approval of Budget Member Request one zero zero two zero zero to reallocate funding approved for the fifty percent cost of the bond supervisor position for Community Supervision and Corrections Department. This is CSCD from the CSCD pre-trial general fund grant programs to CSCD split funded salary, employees and salaries and benefit line items per the Auditor's Office request to track expenditures in payroll-related items. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven B is approval of Budget Member Request one zero zero two one zero to increase revenue and allocate expenditures for the Criminal District Attorney, the Vine Grant, in amount of thirty thousand two hundred eighty-six dollars from victim, victim notification services for the fiscal year. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven C, which is approval of Budget Member Request one zero zero two three zero to transfer fifty-four thousand one hundred thirteen dollars for non-departmental personal contingency to probate court number one salary and benefits line items for the increase of probate court one judge salary to account for the service as associate judge in accordance with the House Bill three-four-seven for the ADA, the Texas Legislature Regular Session and Government Code two-five-point-zero-six-three-two and six-five-nine-point-zero-one-two. The chair move for approval, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is eight A, report from, ma'am? What?
Yeah, I think we did it.
Do we need to reopen it?
No, no, I didn't hear it.
Oh, you didn't hear it, okay. It's okay. It all runs together sometimes, I get it. Item, uh, but thank you. Item eight A is a report from Human Resources regarding hiring actions of elected officials in the Gestapo.
Judge, Commissioners, good morning. We have one promotion in the county clerk, one new hire in the district clerk, one new hire in JP number five, one demotion in UN approbation, one promotion in UN approbation, five new hires in the sheriff's office, all those detention officer ones, one lateral transfer in the sheriff's office, one promotion in the sheriff's office, and two promotions in the tax office. That's it for this week.
Perfect, thank you. That is for recording purposes only. And it's great to see, who's here? One, two, three, four, five, five, uh, DOs, DO ones, and it's just great news. So, we appreciate everyone's involvement in that over the last couple of years. All right, let's go to item, next to item thirteen A, which is approval of the United Way of Denton County Incorporated funding request to fulfill the allocation of American Rescue Plan for housing assistance, nonprofit assistance, and food assistance due to COVID-nineteen and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell. Second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item thirteen B, approval of the Commissioners Court casting, and we will go back to this one later after executive session. Let's go to item thirteen C, approval of a request to submit a grant application to the Texas Historical Commission Certified Local Government Subgrant Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-four in amount of sixty thousand dollars and any appropriate action. The chair will move for approval. Second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is thirteen D, acceptance of one, a donation of the historical nineteen oh seven Fellowship United Methodist Church Building and Contents in Roanoke, Texas, and two, authorized a county judge to sign the deed of gift agreement and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item fourteen B, approval of the inter-local cooperation agreement between Denton County, Texas and the City of Denton, Texas for the widening. Peggy, thank you for all your efforts on that church, and I appreciate you being here this morning, so thank you. Uh, item fourteen B is approval of the inter-local cooperation agreement between Denton County, Texas and the City of Denton, Texas for the widening of Bonnie Bray Road as a four-lane divided roadway between Rose Lawn Drive and FM fifteen fifteen. This is the Bonnie Bray Phase Three project at a, at an estimated cost of forty-two million three hundred eighteen thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars, with Denton County agreeing to contribute two million eight hundred fifty-one thousand seven hundred eighty-five dollars towards satisfactory completion of the project with funding in amount of two hundred and ninety-eight thousand one hundred twenty-four, one hundred twenty-four dollars and eighty-three cents to come from discretion, precinct four discretionary. Trip oh eight, and this is alter line item seven-eight-seven-five-four-zero-nine-zero-six-zero and to be transferred to Bonnie Bray Precinct Four, Trip oh eight, alter line item seven-eight-seven-three-seven-five-nine-zero-six-zero, funding the amount of five hundred and fifty-three thousand six hundred sixty dollars and seventeen cents to come from precinct two discretionary. This is Trip oh eight, alter line item seven-eight-seven-five-two-five-nine-zero-six-zero and to be transferred to Bonnie Bray Vintage Precinct Two, Trip oh eight, alter line item seven-eight-seven-five-four-nine-nine-zero-six-zero, and funding the amount of two million to come from Bonnie Bray Phase Four B Precinct Four, Trip twenty-two, alter line item eight-nine-seven-five-seven-three-nine-zero-three-zero. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson. Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen C, approval of the inter-local cooperation agreement between Denton County, Texas and the City of Denton, Texas for the Elm Street and Locust Street Reconstruction Project from three eighty to Oak Street in an estimated cost of twenty-one million, with Denton County to contribute two million towards satisfactory completion of the project with funding to come from Elm and Locust Precinct Four, Trip twenty-two. This is alter line item eight-nine-seven-five-seven-five-nine-zero-three-zero. Any appropriate action? Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second with Commissioner Mid, uh, Falconer. Joey and Tina, I'm gonna ask that y'all work closely with the City of Denton on this project if we're contributing to it. Um, I've been very displeased with the, the construction around the square that's gone on for years, um, in the City of Denton. I'm very disappointed in the way that they have handled things, and so I, I would just like to, to ask y'all to, to work on, um, working with them on the construction management. It's a reflection on everyone in the road business when the roads are continued to be disrupted like they continue to be in the City of Denton. So, do we have, we have a motion, a second, any other comments? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen D, approval of the inter-local cooperation agreement between Denton County, Texas and the City of Denton, Texas for the Westgate Windsor Bronco Way widening and reconstruction project at an estimated cost of eight point two million, with Denton County contributing to contribute one million towards satisfactory completion of the project with funding to come from the Windsor Westgate Bronco Way Precinct Four, Trip twenty-two, alter line item eight-nine-seven-five-seven-four-nine-zero-three-zero. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Uh, here we go. Let's go to item seventeen, which is community updates. We'll start with Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Judge. Uh, I just wanna make sure to remind everybody tonight, obviously, there may be a lot of little kiddos running around, so please be very cautious and careful when you're driving and, um, make sure that, uh, you have your head up, uh, and out of your phone when you're driving, please, this, this evening. And we wish all of them a wonderful, uh, evening. So that's all I have, Judge.
I didn't know what you were gonna say. Very good. Commissioner Falconer.
All right. Yes, there's a, a lot
Go Rangers, sorry.
Oh, go Rangers, yes.
Sorry.
Quite a few, quite a few things happening. Um, and let's start with, the Colony has a cleanup event on the fourth, eight AM, uh, at sixteen hundred Main Street, and Carrollton, uh, I'm gonna mention just the, there's a lot of things going on in Carrollton, but the big one is the Festival at the Switchyard. It's coming Saturday, November fourth. Uh, it goes all day from eleven AM to ten in downtown Carrollton. Big event, uh, in the evening. Corinth has Arbor Day Celebration on the fourth from nine AM to eleven-thirty at Sycamore Bend Park. And, um, And, uh, let's see, Frisco has Arbor Fest and Buffalo Stomp twenty twenty-three on the fourth from nine A M. to noon, and that's at Frisco Commons Park. And Little Elm has Kid Fish on the fourth as well. It's gonna be a busy day, nine to eleven. That's at McCord Park. And Sunday's on the lawn on the fifth, uh, from eleven to three. And, um, that is all I have.
Flowerman. Flowerman has the farmers market at Parker Square still going on, so be sure you go out and attend that. Also, uh, fall chalk to walk art contest, November the fourth at Spinks Road Heritage Park from twelve to three P M. Veterans Day Ceremony in still in Flowerman, November the fifth, one P M. to three P M. At thirty-four eleven Peters Colony at the Flowerman High School Stadium. Veterans Day Relay, November the tenth, nine A M. And that's the Flowerman Community Activity Center. Also Art Party, November the tenth, um, thirty thirty Broadmoor Lane. Uh, they're having a art party, so come out if you can draw. I've already, uh, determined that I can't paint and I can't draw, so I'm not going to that one. I'm gonna keep my day job. I'm gonna keep my day job. All right. And we have Dorothy Dash Five K Run Walk on November the eleventh, seven A M. At Duncan Lane Bakersfield Park. We also have a second annual cornhole tournament at Spinks Road at Heritage Park. Also in Holland Village, we have a, uh, salute the veterans. That's on the tenth at Hilton Garden Inn. We also have Giving Grace eleven four at the Gala, uh, excuse me, Gaylor at Embassy Suites. That's in Dent. Tri-Town Amazing Race, November the eighteenth at Doubletree Park. I sign y'all up for that one. Each one of y'all live in a different city, so you ought to be able to make it. Uh, Our Village Globes, November the eighteenth in Holland Village. Lake Dallas Cities Chamber Monthly Luncheon, November the eighth. Going on down to Louisville Castle Hill Village Shops every Saturday, nine to one. Acoustic Jam Session, Ryan, you may be able to do that one at November the third in Louisville at the Louisville Grand Theater.
I'm yep.
And K L B Trinity Trash Bash, November the fourth. And Saturday Nature Walk, November the fourth at ten A M. At Lila. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna attend that one, so, okay. Y'all all have your signs.
Lila, you're going to Lila.
Yeah.
I can't wait. To see you in the woods.
You're going with me? Before I do our community events, uh, that are the usual ones, I'd like to make you aware of a very special one. It's gonna be taking place, um, on Saturday, November eleventh, and it's gonna be over at the University of North Texas as they hold the fifth annual induction ceremony for uh, Texas Veterans Hall of Fame. And the veteran they're honoring this year is a young man, he was at the time, who received the Medal of Honor for his service in Vietnam. His name is Dwight Birdwell. And as you all may know, we have a Senator Birdwell from Granbury. We've got a Justice Birdwell over in Fort Worth in the Second Court of Appeals. I checked with the Justice, uh, Birdwell yesterday to see if they were related, and he said he doesn't know, but he's gonna find out. But you know, how many Birdwells can there be in the state of Texas? This man is from Amarillo, Texas, and he was awarded Medal of Honor for just an amazing service during, uh, the Vietnam conflict. I read what, what's, uh, been written about it, and it just, this guy is a true hero. And so we have the opportunity to go meet a true Medal of Honor winner on the eleventh. If you are interested in that, uh, you can go online. There, there are tickets required. It's W W W dot Tex, T X veterans dot org. It'll give you all the information. And I, I salute this, this gentleman who's gonna be the, the primary speaker at this particular event. Then getting back to the more mundane things. In Denton, we have an adapted recreation dance on November third. That's for ages sixteen plus. And then we have a Texas Arbor Day Tree Planning on November fourth. And it's gonna be at South Lakes Park and Eureka Playground. November ninth, we're gonna have Preserving the Harvest at M L K Center. This is gonna be a hands-on class to teach individuals how to preserve food. And then their, their Veterans Day program for ages fifty plus will be November tenth, one to two at the Civic Center. Other areas in precinct four, uh, have similar things going on. I just, I hope everybody will take time to remember Veterans Day. It's such an important holiday. This is honoring those who have served in our military. This is not to be confused with Memorial Day, but Veterans Day is specifically to honor our veterans. Judge, would you mind if I ask if there are any veterans in the audience today that we asked them to stand up? Do we have any veterans? Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Paul.
In Justin, they will have Arbor Day on November third. And in Roanoke, they will have a Veterans Day Parade, Car Show and Cook Off on the eleventh from ten to two. And Trophy Club, we have, uh, a fire station open house. And then they're gonna have a national First Responders Day event on the fourth. And then on the eleventh, they will have a Veterans Day celebration. I hope all of you will participate in some way celebrating Veterans Day. And when you see a veteran, thank that veteran because we, we can be here because of what they have done for us. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Commissioner. All right, we're gonna proceed to our executive session. And we have fifteen A, which is, fifteen A, which is Texas Government Code five-five-one zero seven four A one Personal Matters Close Meeting Deliberate the Appointment of a Public Officer to the Denton Central Appraisal District Board of Directors. Fifteen B, Texas Government Code five-five-one zero seven four five A one Personal Matters Affecting a County Advisory Body Close Meeting Deliberate the Appointment Employment Evaluation Reassignment Duties Discipline or Dismissal of a Member of a Advisory Body to With the Child Protective Services Board. Fifteen C, Texas Government Code five-five-one zero seven four five A one Personal Matters Affecting a County Advisory Body Close Meeting Deliberate the Appointment Employment Evaluation Reassignment Duties Discipline or Dismissal of a Member of a Advisory Body to With the Current Tax Increment Investment Reinvestment Zone. This is terms number two. And fifteen D, Texas Government Code five-five-one zero seven two Deliberation Regarding Real Property Close Meeting Deliberate the Purchase, Lease or Value of Real Property Located in Denton County Commissioner Precinct Four. When deliberation in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the governmental body in negotiations with a third person and any appropriate action. And it is nine fifty-eight and we are in executive session. Thank you.